Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. Today is August 11th, 2021. I call the meeting to order. The meeting is being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. All members of the public will have an opportunity to be heard later on. Ms. Porters, please have a long call.
Mayor Kranjak.
Here.
Council President Wu. Council President Wu.
Here.
Councilman Park.
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh.
Yeah.
Councilman Diego Goryo.
Here.
Councilman Luciano.
Present.
Councilman Katrubis.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Acting Borough Administrator Karen McMorro.
Present.
And myself, or presently.
Okay, thank you. Please, everyone, let's have to flag so now. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
This flag.
One nation under God.
Under God, invisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. We've lost a few people recently, and I'd like to honor them. And the first person who passed away is Dr. Salvatore Laraya. He's a longtime resident of Englewood Cliffs and a longtime Englewood Cliffs Police Department surgeon. Next is Resident Forrest Walcheck. And a third, which I think is important that we do this also, is remember Chicago Police Out of French. Died in a. Okay, thank you, and.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just make a motion to.
I'm sorry.
The acting borough administrator.
Second the motion, second. Second the motion.
The motion is out of order. It's not on the agenda, not to be considered.
Guys, I'm speaking.
Second the motion, second the motion.
Mr. Diego Goryo.
Second the motion.
I'm speaking, sir. You don't have the floor. We follow Robert's rules, and I guess this is a good time to do that. To members of the public and to Karen Geiger in particular, who doesn't know much about anything, but she seems to write a lot about nothing. We, Englewood Cliffs, follow Robert's rules of order, and we also have a set of bylaws. So those two items comprise our rules of how to conduct meetings. I am the mayor. I get to chair the meetings. And when Mr. Luciano, who just interrupted me, and Mr. Diego Goryo, who joined him interrupting me, interrupt me, I get gavel though. With the gavel. However, we are meeting virtually. So the gavels aren't going to be very effective. So then mute button has become the new gavel. Despite what Geiger writes to the town, we are trying to actually instill democracy in this town. She and her cronies were the ones who took it away from you all. I had reintroduced it. Mr. Luciano and Mr. Diego Goryo go through great pains to disrupt every meeting like they just did. And we're not going to tolerate that. So let's turn our attention to what just happened. Mr. Luciano wanted to introduce something that's not on the agenda. The way things get on the agenda, because the 2019 Democrat Council majority did it this way and changed our bylaws, is that there's an agenda committee, which has to meet one week before the meeting. And at that agenda committee meeting, you'll have three people. We had that meeting last Wednesday. It was duly noticed. It was duly constituted. The clerk was there. The borough administrator was there. Mr. Pharaoh was there. Mr. Katrubis was there for part of it, and I was there. Everything that was presented to us would be put on the agenda was considered. Not everything was accepted. To Luciano, Mr. Diego Goryo, you'll have to live with that. It's not on the agenda. I am not here to be your schoolteacher. You know how things are done. If you want to be disruptive, go live in another town, but don't do it here. We are not going to tolerate that. So your meeting, your motion that you made is improper, as Borough Attorney just told you. And that's it. We're going to move forward with the agenda. One of the things that I was saying when I was interrupted was the Chicago police officer who died, died in large part because of the defund the police campaigns that went on last year and continue this year. And it's a terrible thing, and I just want our police department to know that I will always stand by their side. Now, we had a protest in town last year. Mr. Diego Goryo stood next to the defund the police protesters, as did Ms. Savari. And yes, you know, as Geiger did that too. So that's where their heads are at. My head is that law and order and protecting the police and their families. This is also, I want to take a moment to remember. It was actually last Wednesday. It's the 231st anniversary of the United States Coast Guard. And I know some people in the audience are veterans of the Coast Guard. I know Ms. McMorro had two sons in the Coast Guard, so we we joined them in celebrating their birthday. In terms of COVID updates, as of today, we actually have zero active cases. The last active case was on August 6. And historically, we've had a total of 389 cases. Sadly, we had nine deaths of residents. Ms. Porters, can you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Open Public Meetings Act or Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 Annual Mayor and Council Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, posted on the borough's website, posted on the outside doors of the Borough Municipal Building, since public access to such building is not allowed because of COVID-19. Other borough facilities are applicable and provided to all parties who have requested a copy of such notice. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom, pursuant to various executive orders promulgated by Governor Philip Murphy, pursuant to the provisions of PL 2020, Chapter 11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to various local finance notices promulgated by the State of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs, and the Local Finance Board. Notice as to Zoom access also been provided according to law.
Thank you, Ms. Porters. Next on the agenda, it's my note here for the Borough Charity Project. This is a project that we started a few years ago. It's basically raising contributions and nonperishable food items for the Office of Concerned Food Pantry. This is probably one of the only things that we could all unite around to help needy communities, surrounding communities, by donating nonperishable food items, or you can make a cash contribution as well, or go online, contribute to them. They're very grateful, and the need is great. Y'all, everyone on council would have received the department head reports from July of 2021. And just moving down the agenda, because I know it's.
There's members of the council that are muted, Mr. Mayor. They shouldn't be muted.
Yeah, well, they kept interrupting me, so they're going to stay muted until I finish this part of the agenda. Thank you for being their advocate.
I'm not an advocate. I'm an advocate of fairness. There's members of the council.
Do you think it was fair that they interrupted me, Mr. Katrubis?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So what I was saying is actually that I didn't think it was very fair of them to interrupt me. Did you think that was fair?
I think you should get yourself a gavel and stop muting people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So one of the things that I, yes, I have the floor. You don't, sir. I just wanted to relay something that I did earlier this week. I had a lot of people upset with what is Ben &amp; Jerry's owned by Unilever. And then Jerry's did say that they're going to stop selling ice cream to certain parts of Israel. And every news article that mentioned Unilever, Ben &amp; Jerry's also mentioned Englewood Cliffs. So I wrote to the CEO, and I'll read the letter that I wrote, and there'll be a copy provided if you wish. This is August 9th. Dear Mr. Joe, I write to express my deep concerns surrounding Unilever's subsidiary Ben &amp; Jerry's decision to cede sales of their products in occupied Palestinian territory. Not only is this move disturbing, but it's also a violation of New Jersey's anti-BBS laws. Those are the boycott, divestment, sanction laws. As the mayor of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, home to the American headquarters of Unilever, I strongly encourage you to reevaluate your company's position and to treat everyone fairly without the virtue signal that ultimately creates unfair treatment. While we are grateful for the presence of Unilever in our community, discrimination of any kind will not be tolerated. Englewood Cliffs is a wonderful, wonderful place to work and live, and we welcome all lawful businesses, big and small, and all residents. We have always welcomed Unilever and have been fortunate to have you in our community. This has gone too far. Israel is one of the most democratic and free countries in the world. It is a beacon of freedom in the Middle East and one of America's greatest allies. It concerns me that your company is so quick to chastise Israel while continuing to support and profit from other countries and movements that daily commit substantial human rights violations, genocide, unlawful imprisonment, forced reeducation, and race-based classifications. This letter is written to encourage Unilever to return to its own stated corporate mission, which is to add vitality to life. We meet everyday needs for nutrition, hygiene, and personal care with brands that help people feel good, look good, and get more out of life. Englewood Cliffs stands with Israel and its people, and we will not remain silent on my watch. In fact, we will stand with anyone that is wrongly targeted. I strongly encourage you to reconsider your decision on this matter and to add vitality to all lives. So that was, that was my letter to the CEO, and perhaps for the next meeting, we should have an agenda item for the council to actually have a resolution accordingly if they wish. Let me find my agenda. So I'm doing this off of my laptop.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make.
I'd like to move the minutes as the package.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Zoom control from Mr. Mayor.
And give it a hand. Mr. Katrubis.
I made a.
You interrupted Mr. Pharaoh. You did not have the floor.
I second, I second his motion.
There's not, there's nothing to say.
I second his motion.
I make.
Let me just explain this to you guys, the way this works. You don't get to call out. This isn't recess time in the playground, right? This is an adult professional meeting. I chair the meeting. I know you don't like me, but that's too bad. Okay, if you want to be called upon, ask to be called upon, but don't just shut out. Mr. Pharaoh made a motion to accept all minutes as presented. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Is there a second?
There's no second, so that fails. We'll go to the next. Okay, Mr. diversity, I'm going to ask Mazuka to continue, and she's on her vacation, as I mentioned, and I wish for her to have.
I second Tim's motion.
So we're going to suspend the order of business and go.
Your motion, you need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to suspend the order of business.
I made a motion to table the.
To suspend it.
Okay. I made a motion before him, and he called out.
Mr. Diego Goryo seconded Mr. Pharaoh's motion.
No. Why didn't I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did, because you called out in the middle of this. Hold on a second, guys. One person at a time.
Mr. Mayor, before we even go to that point, if there is no motion to adopt the minutes in their current function, the next item on the agenda is the budget hearing. Therefore, there is no need for a motion to suspend the order of business. We can get out of the budget discussion.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. Zuka to start off that discussion for us.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Zuka. I appreciate you being here.
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for letting me go first. So I just wanted to update everybody on a couple of issues that are happening. First of all, it's August, and we don't have our budget adopted yet, and it's a little concerning. But more concerning is the things that have happened over the last couple of days with items in our building. We lost the air conditioner unit in the control room of the police department that houses their servers for all their computers, which really would have been devastating if we didn't have a floor model air conditioner to keep the room cool. It wasn't cool enough to stop the servers from possibly crashing. So we had to go out and spend $12,000 to get a new air conditioning unit for that building. There's a lot of other items in Borough Hall and around the borough that really need to be addressed, and it's very concerning because our computers are so old that we can't even get service on them anymore. And our phone system, I believe, I was speaking with Acting Borough Administrator McMorro that some phones aren't even working. And I know the fire department needs some equipment as well. Now, I know we turned down the Capitol ordinance three times, but I was kind of hoping that maybe we can spend less in the Capitol ordinance to at least try to get some of these technology and phone and fire department equipment in a bond ordinance for the next meeting. I also wanted to just let you know that our budget, I've been, I've been having a lot of trouble with some of, not trouble, but I've been having a lot of issues with some of the line items not being enough to get us through the rest of this year. I know the public buildings and the grounds, they have basically nothing left in their budget. The garbage removal is going to be short this year. And we actually had to use police department funds. The chief was very gracious to let us charge that $12,000 air conditioning unit to his budget instead of a capital budget if we would have had it. So I'm basically just asking if it's possible to do a Capitol ordinance and if for the next meeting, we can put the budget hearing on for adoption.
Okay, Councilman Wu, you're the council president. Is there anything that can be done to actually get the budget done and the ordinance done?
You raise your hand. You don't get called on. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Tammy, which, which items? Where did we leave off on that? We had split up. Right, last time?
We split up what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The Capitol ordinance. We had, we had split it up, and there were certain items that didn't pass.
Well, actually, the whole ordinance failed the last time. But there was much more stuff in that ordinance. I believe the total was almost, I think it was about 890,000. At this point, we're basically just asking for about 350,000 to up to 400,000 just to get the computers, the phone system, and the fire department items. You know, as soon as we possibly can, because when that air conditioning unit failed, we were pretty lucky that we had the floor models that we can put in there for, you know, temporarily.
Look, I told the guys, I'm out. I'm not dealing with this behavior, and I hope you support me, so.
Okay, I'm going to, I just want to tell the sheriff off that.
Let's go. There'll be no quorum if we all leave. Let's go. Everyone out, 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 out. Stop this meeting. Stop it. It's ridiculous. It's undemocratic.
You all listening to this guy? Do you hear them? You heard Luciano.
Yeah.
Katrubis and Diego Goryo conspiring.
Yes.
Conspiring against everyone else.
But the only one conspiring is you. I had my hand raised.
This is not democratic.
So, so you got Luciano and Diego Goryo and Katrubis actually
oh.
talking as if that we don't hear them, right? And now Mazuka, who's a very serious person, and I appreciate you being here. And there's about 50 people here, 52 people. And there's 49 serious people and three class clowns, right? Diego Goryo, Luciano, Katrubis. We've been trying to do this Capitol ordinance for six months now, right? Seven months, really, if you count back. What are we doing here, guys?
Bring this meeting to a stop. Stop the meeting now.
Mayor.
Hold on a second. Mr. Wu, you're also a highly accomplished professional entrepreneur, businessperson. I feel badly that you're surrounded by, by three class clowns like this, but do you think there's anything we can do to get this ordinance, the Capitol ordinance and the budget passed? Because I think they probably collectively wasted about 60 hours of our time at meetings this year so far, and they're about to do it again. So the three of them want to leave. We still have a quorum. So if they leave, they leave, which was what they were talking about. If you call what they said, let's just leave and break the quorum. Very childish. Mr. Wu, any suggestions?
Relative to this ordinance, I mean, the only thing we can do is, folks that are against it, you know, just draft it up in the way that these are all essential needs, right? The AC is down in the server room. We have to get it replaced. I'm, I'm supportive of the 350,000 that Tammy is proposing. We, we need to do it. But unfortunately, we also have to follow the system and the procedures here, so.
So Ms. McMorro, I know you've been working very hard with this.
I just want to update. Excuse me. Just want to update the council president. Tammy and I speak every day. It's been a very challenging year with this budget because for several reasons, you know, when, when, when there have not been improvements to infrastructure for a couple of years, it's like a house. It catches up with you eventually. And this is the year that it just seems to be having everything catch up with it. What Tammy, I just want to add to what she's saying, what you need to know. The, the air conditioner in the radio control room broke first, which is what prompted the DPW superintendent to have to go buy the portable units to cool down the radio room, which exhausted all the funds out of the Buildings and Grounds account. Then, within five days, the air conditioner in the police department's server room broke. They had to then take the air conditioners from the radio room, bring them into the server room, and we are on a prayer that, that has not crashed because and to only look at a positive, it happened two days before we were having this meeting, which when the council president was kind enough to come in to assign those, those checks, there was one of them in there that we, Tammy knows, we, we had to, we had to find somebody in 100-degree weather that would come out here immediately to replace those units. He needed a deposit. We had to get that check done. That's on the agenda for a vote tonight. He's on good faith already emptied out those old units. We, we took the $12,000 out of the chief's budget that he already had plans for, but we have no choice, and this is what happens when you don't have a Capitol ordinance to be able to lean back on. But, and I understand you need four votes, but I mean, short of begging, I don't know what else there is to do, which I don't believe any of the employees or professionals or department heads should be begging for essential needs. I mean, we had to find $25,000, $20,000 for oxygen for the fire department. We shouldn't be desperate like this. I mean, how could you not? How did we get to this point that we are so desperate to give our essential service workers what they need to survive? The Windows 7 computers that we desperately need to update, any, any police officer will tell you the 911 system is tied to your computers. If your computer is operating on a Windows 7, it is like as slow as molasses. Those 911 calls, if the computer's not fast, you're not going to be able to answer it quickly enough. This is like really serious stuff there.
I understand. So just, just to recap for the public.
350,000 is bare minimum, Mayor. Bare minimum. Tammy and I figured out.
So what's happened here is that the town's budget and the town's Capitol ordinance has been held up in political gamesmanship, and you all just heard it because they didn't realize that they were not muted. So Mr. Katrubis says to Mrs. Luciano, let's just leave and break their quorum so we don't have to deal with this. I think that's what he said. Mr. Luciano called me some flattering name, said he agreed. And Mr. Diego Goryo, I heard him say this about seven times. Come on, guys, let's get out of here, right? So these are three people who are not fit for public office. Given that episode, Mr. Bernstein, what I like to do is find a way if Mazuka can just petition the state to pass our budget for us and the Capitol ordinance, because we, we deserve better as a borough. The people look better. They, they just given us perfect evidence of why they're not fit for office and they're not willing to work with us. We actually went back and changed this budget several times. But it's all a game to them, right? They're not getting hurt. They haven't had an emergency yet, but maybe someone on this Zoom did. And these guys are going to have blood on their hands at some point to behave in this way. Mr. Bernstein, is that possible to just, just change the process on this?
Ms. Circa? Does it make sense to speak to the department, the division of Walkover Service tomorrow?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's the point that we're at right now. I mean, it's already August. Our next meeting's not until September. There's only four months left of the year after that. I'm surprised they haven't intervened already, honestly, but I think they understand all the changes that happened this year. So I think they're giving us the benefit of the doubt, but they think that it's being adopted tonight, so I'm sure he's going to ask.
Yeah, well, I think we could do the salary ordinance, right, Eric, or is that something I can vote on?
Right. Well, you can't vote anyway, Mayor, because there's no, unless it's a tie. The salary ordinance, I mean, I'll have to check the law on that one, but the budget obviously is going to take four votes.
Well, the South, we have a quorum, so you have three votes. I think that passed.
Give me a moment.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, Mr. Pharaoh, go ahead.
Yeah. If we have to go to the state, I mean, don't go with $300,000, which you go back up to the amount that we really need, which is.
It's going, it's going to be, it's going to be more than that, Councilman. It's going to be the entire budget-related items.
The state's not going to allow you to do a Capitol, Eric.
The state, the state's not going to come in piecemeal. I think Ms. Circa, who's experienced in dealing with the state in her capacity as a CFO, knows what she needs to do and who to talk to when she.
It should go back to the 800,000 that it was being asked originally.
Well, I don't know if the state is going to intervene as far as the Capitol ordinance is concerned, but they will for the budget. I don't think the state, the state's not going to have anything to do with the Capitol ordinance. We need, you know, the council members to to introduce and adopt it on their own. But the budget, that's different. The budget is required by the state, so they can can, they can do something, and I will contact them.
Capital's part of the budget, Tammy, obviously, I'll have to tell.
It is, but not the Capitol ordinance.
Yes.
So Tammy.
Yes.
If you need to any kind of proof to convince them that the three people. If if you need to any kind of proof to convince them that the three people who are just conspiring against this town, Katruba's. And seeing now, D. Gregorio behaved the way they did. Ms. Portras will give you the recording of what they just did.
Okay, if I need it. I I appreciate that now.
And Mr. Mayor.
There's no other word. Hold on, hold on. There's no other word to describe what they did. It's just scalduggery, okay? And that is scalduggery.
A question for Ms. Zooka, if she's going to call the state tomorrow, Tammy. Um, if if you get permission from the council president or the members of the council that are here. Would the to to utilize, perhaps, I know you sent emails, endless emails on this, to utilize a little bit more of the surplus? Would that be helpful to you before you call tomorrow? I'm just trying to see how we can get out of the mess that we're in right now.
Well, yes, I mean, surplus is a is an option. Again, we would need the mayor and council's. Permission to use extra surplus if that's something that they want to do.
That Eric, is it for? Is it? So the three members sitting here are not enough?
I mean, the three members can indicate their. Support of it, but if it's part of the budget, unless the state comes in and says they will change the budget, they will adopt it. You all don't have to do anything. You're going to need four.
Right, but if if Tammy can ask the three that are sitting here now if they would be in favor of utilizing a little bit more surplus for those emergency items. And then the state says, well, we're going to come in if it's really necessary. Is that an I'm just trying to help the the emergency.
We do. We do have. We do have. A little bit. We do have surplus enough to use.
Right.
To add the that money on surplus.
I mean, can we get the the feeling from Council President Wu, Councilman Park, and Councilman Faro with their.
Yeah, I just don't want to change the amendment and then have to change it again because now we're going to go into October by the time it gets. Resolved.
Does anyone have any objection to the CFO approaching the state about the possible use of additional surpluses? In the abstract, obviously, the numbers to be discussed.
Oh, that's fine for me.
Uh, thank you, William. I agree.
Mister Park. Mister Faro.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with that.
Mr. Park, were you okay with that?
Uh. Yeah, we have, you know, no room here. I I I. You know, accepted, but you know, this situation, I'm unhappy to everybody. Anyhow, no way, maybe I cannot accept it, but my feelings are so bad. Okay.
Eric, I'd just like to give consideration, given that we don't have everybody here to. To adjourn. Um, to think through because we we only have, we do have only four of us.
We have the quorum.
Yeah, but we.
Well, I mean, we have enough to adopt resolutions and the ordinance. Three members can vote in favor of the ordinance.
Okay, what, Mister Bernstein, what is the most urgent item? We couldn't finish about most urgent couple things, and then we have to adjourn. That's my.
The. Well. Obviously, you're you're going to have a public portion. Again, I won't speak for the government, for the administrator, for the mayor, but I would assume that ordinance twenty-one nineteen. Uh, resolution twenty-one one sixty-three, which is the bills and claims list.
Hold on, Eric. Eric.
Sorry, Mayor.
Hold on. Guys, we have a quorum. We do this once a month. We we have a lot of business to get through. Let's just try to get through as much of it as we can because if we don't. Then then the three class clowns who just left win, okay? And they make a mockery of your governing body. And that's something that none of us should have to tolerate. So. Can we open to the public for ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen? This is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement ordinance number twenty-one dash zero five.
To motion to to motion to. Change, suspend the order of business.
Why is that?
Because the next item is public portion in general.
I'm sorry, okay.
Can Tammy leave, Mayor? Is she something?
Yeah, you know what? Tammy, go. Thank you so much for being here. We'll try to work through this. I appreciate you taking time off on your vacation.
Yeah, absolutely. I just like to get this. I'd like to get this done. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tammy.
You know what, Eric, we could continue. We should have the public first, I think.
And do the public portion.
Yeah, let's just stay in the order and have a motion to open to the public.
Motion to open to the public, I can.
All favor.
All.
Anyone opposed? Uh, so if you're a member of the public and wish to be heard, please raise your hand. State your name, address, and make your comment. Or ask your question.
You don't see any hands, Mayor.
Uh, I see. Mary O'Shea, Ms. O'Shea.
Right, Ms. O'Shea.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I have to address this to Councilman Wu and Councilman Park at this point. Um, that, um. Because the other three council people have chose to leave. Uh, there's no reason why. Either of you have not. Seconded the motion to approve the minutes. We're talking about February, two for March, three for April, two for May. Four for June. Two for July. Those minutes need to be approved. If there's a problem with any particular minutes. You need to give a memo, email to the clerk. And say what you feel is wrong with it. This has been on the agenda for other other meetings. To keep carrying these forward without approving them is a disgrace, okay? We had a problem with minutes in the past, and the fact that these minutes are prepared and are not being approved. Shame on you. Shame on you, William, and shame on you, Mark. Okay, you're there to do a job, and you're not doing the job. And I'm very disappointed in you, okay? And. It's wrong. The minutes need to be approved. You're just blanketly not doing it. You're not doing your job. Just like the three men that left. Katruba's. Resigning from the recreation committee. Katruba's resigning as liaison from the school board. What does he think he's there in the council to do? He's doing nothing, okay? And. D. Goryo and Luciano likewise. They're doing nothing. They're contributing nothing to the council and nothing to the town. It's a disgrace, total disgrace, okay? Now, I know what they're they're keep trying to interject. Uh, uh, comments and and things about the about the administrator. And. From everything that I've seen at meetings, the administrator is doing an excellent job. And you should not be. Trying to attack her, okay? This is totally wrong. And I'm disappointed in you, okay? And I helped work for all of you and and I I don't know what to say. I don't know how. To. Express. My disappointment. Full disappointment. With what's going on, okay? Mister Katruba's is a disgrace. He's done nothing on the council. Okay, Mister D. Goryo has done nothing. And neither has Mister Luciano, okay? Please. Do what you're there to do. Do your business, okay? Please. Thank you.
Yeah, so I I think.
Oh, and one other thing. Once you have a quorum, when you open the meeting, I don't care how many people leave, you still have a quorum. So you can vote on anything and talk about anything because you had a quorum when you opened the meeting. And if they leave, that's their choice. You still have your quorum, and I think Mister Bernstein can verify that.
Ms. O'Shea, I could just address the minutes. The handling of the minutes is a topic of discussion in closed session. And that's the reason that I did not vote for it. There's dispute over how they're how they're being handled. Um, and we talked about it in closed session. Um, I haven't formulated my thought yet as to. How we should be handling it, but it's something that was discussed relative to you mentioned you guys attacking the. Borough administrator. I'm not sure who you're referring to. Um, please don't include. I I have not attacked the borough administrator, so. Um, I heard you as in including myself. Uh, in in the word you and and, you know, I take that, I take. Take that, take offense to that because that's certainly not the case on my side. I make my votes and that's it. It's all business.
Okay, I I think this is actually a good opportunity tonight to have a quick meeting, but get everything done. There's no reason why. We can't just run through the agenda as Mrs. O'Shea mentioned. Given that the three people who disrupt us most have voluntarily left this meeting. Um, so, uh, good good riddance for the evening. Let's see if we can just get everything done. I don't see any other hands up.
Mitch's Mitch's iPhone.
Mitch's iPhone.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mitch's iPhone.
Hi, good, good evening. This is Mitch Kapsakis, two fifty-one Alfred. Um, just want to mention. Um, just just listening to these meetings that, um. The. Writing is kind of on the wall. I see. Uh, Councilman Wu, Councilman Park there as well. You have Mary O'Shea complaining that they're not just. Going along with the party as opposed to. Doing what they feel as elected people that needs to be done. Um, you have a. Mayor who has. Enemies on the Democratic side, of course. And now there are people like myself. Who voted for him. That have. A bit of. Hesitation as to where are we really going with such negativity? That has me second guessing everything here, and I think most people in this town. Are more with. My matter of. Feeling. More so than a Mary O'Shea. And a. Carol McMorro. And, uh, I think, Mayor, you need to take a step back, realize that as a town. There is. A mindset here. And me who voted for you. Feels like it's. Um, very disappointing. That we can't just. Move forward with what we wanted to do as opposed to picking these fights and this tit for tat all the time. The writing is on the wall. You need to reassess how you treat everybody. And let us move forward. Let us pass agendas. Let us stop the frivolous lawsuits. Criminal lawsuits. I think, um, it's really a matter of. Again, taking a step back and reassessing everything, whether you hear me or not. And or you just brush me off is one thing, but just know that I'm a very much of I was a very much proponent of you and your cause. Um, for for many, many years, but now it's just very, very. Um, hard to say. I'm for the mayor and for his agenda, so I just want you to consider that in moving forward.
Mister Capas, do you support eight hundred Sullivan building their development?
Of course not.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I I appreciate your comments. Um. And the the thing that you have to understand, though, is as as mayor. And as a good leader, you have to make decisions based on facts, not feelings, because you just kept speaking about feelings. I love feelings too, but feelings don't get the job done sometimes. Facts do. And if you're hearing facts from people that you think are facts, those are feelings. You mentioned it yourself. I'm happy to discuss it with you. Because I think you and I should have a discussion. I think you'll understand a lot more in terms of what's happening. Um, anyone else wishing to have their comments made?
And Mister Meta and Debbie's iPhone.
Okay, Mister Meta, go ahead.
I just heard your response in reference to whatever Mitch Kapaski said. That you would like to have. Um. A conversation. I believe that you should you should have the conversation. In terms of a public this thing where you do not have the power. To mute and throw people out of the Zoom. And then you should ask the people. What they really think. So you're saying, are you against eight hundred Sullivan? Or are you for eight hundred Sullivan? Yeah, but I do not believe that anything what has been done here. Though. We helped you get elected with the promise of unseating or defeating eight hundred Sullivan. I myself. Do not see anything being done over here, either by you or your team. On the contrary, what you did was. Threw everybody out, and you just decided to go your way, along with the support of the administrator. And executing whatever you think is right, and you have lost every lawsuit. And you have no further place to go to. You can continue whitewashing or telling people how you're going to do. But that was not part of the plan. You. Basically put the administrator in charge. I was not even involved at that time. But you put the administrator, and it's only you and her who are executing this with zero rate of success on every issue. Okay, so if you really want to talk, let's have a public meeting and let's discuss as to what you are doing. And what's the plan for you to either get a proper resolution about eight hundred Sullivan? I'll give you an example. Just one example of what everybody can hear. When you were supposed in starting of the year. And I can actually present the facts and actually show the documents. You sued an I T guy. Your administration sued an I T guy. Okay, for having deleted that. But guess what? You actually. E- even if you had not thought through. You were given the information as to disable the I T access password and everything. As of earlier than you actually taking the power of control on the first January. Okay, I'm just giving you one example and.
I don't know what you based that on, but go ahead.
Um.
I I I know you you like to make up things and make them sound.
I know, I know. And so allow me.
Going to happen here.
Me in the next to share, and I will share with all the public my email to you, giving you exactly what to do or not to do, and yet. Your able administration and administrator and you did not do any of those things. And so guess what? They deleted sixteen to twenty thousand emails, what you guys claimed, and you have filed the lawsuit. That should have never happened. Had you properly followed the footsteps. Okay, or what the right protocol is doing has to be done. So I know you like.
So someone commits a crime.
One second, Mr. Brainjack, I should finish. It's my fault. Brainjack, let me finish.
Now, hold on a second. You you said something really.
No, you can. You can talk afterwards. I know you like to disturb people and.
No, no, go ahead. I thought you were finished.
No.
I know you like to go on, go ahead.
Take them, take them to a different place and start talking about.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I can share that document with people, and then you raise your questions and ask. As to why, why didn't you take those steps and why the administrator did not take your steps, those things which are required? And now why do we have a lawsuit pending against the I T person with all those messages delivered? You, for all reason, you could have found those emails which you're looking for, for which you have filed the lawsuit. And basically spending the money of the taxpayers because of certain steps you did not take place. And yet, and yet, use always, it's blame of others. And these are the bad boys, the those three guys. As a matter of fact, I see you not allowing them, and you say you're following the law or following the rule. And your agenda rule, and you basically, I've seen, I only came last two or three times. From what I see, that you are not allowing people to put up the items on agenda. So I do not know whom you are trying to fool. Basically, it's a please do not say that you are following the law and you are transparent and you are able, you, what do you call it?
I don't have to say it because I am.
You are not the law, sir.
And no, no.
Just because you're the mayor, you're not the law.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
You know, it's so insightful by Mister Mate that to say that I can stop someone from doing something illegal when they when they delete twenty thousand files.
Or you could have taken, you could have, no, it was your job.
You you're done. You had your time. You're done. It's so insightful for someone like Mister Mate, the Monday morning quarterback, to tell me that we may have had someone. Uh, in the network who's deleting emails, right? So insightful. Uh, the other thing that he gets completely wrong is that, and I mentioned it before, but I think he joined later, is. The way our agendas are created or they're created to an agenda committee, we follow all the rules. Um, and 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 that's that. Um, and, and, and that's that. Uh, and, and as for Mr. Mate attacking the borough administrator, uh, again, uh, he hasn't spent a day in Borough Hall. He has no idea what he's talking about. Um, it all looks so simple when you're sitting there. So, um, I don't see anyone else. Um, have a motion to close the public portion, please.
Motion to close?
Are you gonna unmute yourself, Mrs. Valore? This is Valore, you can unmute yourself. You, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, am I there?
Yes.
Hi, Maria Valari, forty-five Jane Drive. I have to tell you, it's becoming really difficult to come on to these meetings. Month after month and having the disruption, uh, that Mr. De Gregorio and, uh, the other gentleman interrupting constantly. And tonight, I think it was the ultimate insult by leaving a meeting. By talking to each other and, uh, and Tim Kadruvus as well. Um, you know, I, th- this just sounds so familiar. This is the playbook now that, uh, the Democrats are taking where they're going to leave so you can vote, just like the people in Texas took a plane, got out of there and, uh, aren't coming back so that they cannot vote. And that is really disrespectful of a, of an elected official to, to do something like that, to, to actually decide they're not gonna vote, knowing that you don't have a quorum. I hope that you do. I hope that what, uh, I think it was, uh, was it Miss Zucco or Miss, uh, McMorro said that you'd still do have a quorum because they decided to leave. I don't know. That's up to Mr. Bernstein, the attorney. I hope that's true because that would be truly wonderful to do. I mean, you know, something we can, we can look back on all sorts of decisions that we made in our lifetime and, and see where we could have done different or we could have done better. And that's easy to say, but now we are here. And, um, I'm not sure what went on in your caucus. I'm not sure what it is that, uh, they were trying to jump in and put on an agenda. But you know, what needs to stop is, is to let everyone have their, their say and then let them have their say. And if it's legal improper, then we do it that way. Um, but this is very disappointing to, to see where we are, that we don't even have a true budget yet, that we can't vote on anything because we have these, these people who want to disrupt our town. They want to disrupt our government uh, to achieve most likely what they think will be a win in November or whatever. Uh, but it's very dis- disheartening for the, for the residents to sit back and, and go through this week after week and not get anything done. I, I, it's, it, it just boggles my mind. I'm sorry, I'm rambling, I'm tired. And, um, I, I hope that we are able to vote tonight. I would like to see that. Uh, I'm not sure why they have this issue with Miss McMorro, whatever it is, it's their personal feelings. I do know that she's a very hard worker and, uh, you know, and I'm not sure what they want to do, but what they may want to do may cause us to be in more trouble in the long run. So, uh, it would be nice for us to know exactly what it is that, um, I mean, some people, some people are, are upset about. I see that Mr. Kadruva's wife is still on and I'm disappointed that he's not on. I worked very hard to, to help Mr. Kadruva's win an election. And it's kind of sad for me to see, to see where we are right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw, um, there's one more person who let her hand up Debbie's iPhone.
Hi, this is Deborah Sabari. And I'm listening to what's happening here. And the truth is, is that I was on the agenda committee. And if you read the bylaws, it doesn't give the agenda committee the right to decide what is actually on the agenda. The idea of the agenda committee was to bring together everybody's thoughts and to put it on the agenda. It was not to stifle any particular party. And you can ask anybody on the council at that time if they were ever denied having anything put on the agenda by the agenda committee. They will have to
I'll tell you right now.
I think you did.
You denied me.
Excuse me, Mayor, excuse me. I've never denied you
You make up stuff.
Or anybody else. To put anything on the agenda. A matter of fact, you put whatever you wanted on the agenda and you never came to the agenda committee. So, you know, there is no way that you can sit up there and say that the Democrats put this in place that they picked and chose what was put on the agenda, because that's not the case. No Republican was ever denied putting anything on the agenda or Democrats for that matter.
I'll call you a liar.
So, well, you know, I guess you a liar too, but that would just be a waste of my time right now. So I thank you, but I wanted the public to know that this is, this is the way it worked on the agenda committee and that you're lying to the public.
Thank you. So, so for the public, in two thousand nineteen in January, the Democrat control majority decided that they were gonna change the bylaws uh, to take control of the agendas. And by doing that, they took it away from me. And at the time, I said, be careful, be careful, um, what you're doing because you may regret it and you may regret it a lot sooner than you think. And here we are. Uh, we are following the rules that the Democrats put in place in two thousand nineteen. And now, of course, those rules aren't good for them anymore. They don't like those rules because they don't control things. Look, if they want to change the bylaws, this council could go and change the bylaws, but, um, this Sabari denied me many times about putting things on the agenda. And, and, um, that was unfortunate. Um, and you know, the, the, it shouldn't be lost on you all that, um, every single person who approved the settlement with eight hundred silver, Sabari, Song, Versa, and oh, they all left the council. They all left the council because they know what a mess they left us with. Okay? And now they get to sit back there and, and just hope and pray that I don't figure out exactly what they did wrong. Mr. Sabari, you already had your moment. Uh, so have a motion to close the public portion, please.
Motion to close?
All favor. Second. And, um, all favor. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, um, you know, we, we could get some work done here without the three, Ramon, did you?
I would like to, uh, go back and move the, uh, the minutes for approval.
Is there a second? Okay, there's no second. Uh, was there another item regarding the movement of money?
Uh, Mr. Bunstai, what is the most urgent items? Uh, I don't want to continue this, you know, the, the meeting. So I want to finish about the very urgent matters. So I'm asking to mayor to adjourn this meeting. That is my position. If you don't like it, I'm gonna leave this room.
Mr. Bernstein, let me
This kind of, you know, the meeting, I, I don't support about it. Mr. Uh, Bunstai, please. What is the most urgent item? And I'm gonna to leave this room. That's my position, okay? Don't ask me.
We, we, we're all elected, uh, to do our job.
I know that, I know that. But I, I'm, this is my best. Don't push me. This is my position. What is the best, the urgent item? Please let me know.
Mr. Bern, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Park, let me speak. We have items on here, including paying people the payment of claims, the salary ordinance. We have resolutions to pass. We could get done in ten minutes. Because these would, these are not controversial things, Mr. Park.
You know, the, every time, you know, we got this kind of forum, clearly, you know, I'm sick and tired. You are mayor, you have to, you know, exercise your leadership.
I'm telling you to do your job.
Every single month, we do this way. Every tower, I don't like this one.
Mr. Park.
I don't like this one. I'm asking you to adjourn this meeting. I'm gonna leave this room.
Mr. Park, so you don't want to do, you don't want to do your work?
Mayor. May I please respond to Councilman Park's request?
Oh, don't say it to me.
Well, you asked
I'm gonna to do that. My job. Keep continuing this forum.
All right.
You are mayor, you are leader of this town. You have to show your leadership.
Yeah, I am. I'm telling you to do your job. That's my leadership, Mr. Park.
No. How come we do this way?
Excuse me.
Okay, what is the
Okay, you asked, I'll tell you. It's public hearing on ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen. Uh, this is an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement ordinance number twenty-one dash zero five entitled An Ordinance Fixing Salaries, Wages and Compensation for All Salary Deappointed and Elected Officials Within the Borough of Angler Close, the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. By amending, revising and supplementing certain hourly RDM positions. Um, have a motion to open to a public for this.
Make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
Well, all favor.
Want to take a vote, Mayor?
We're, we're opening to the public.
Okay.
Any members of the public?
If any member from the public wishes to be heard regarding just that ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen, uh, please virtually raise your hand. Uh, I'll follow. Okay, I don't see anyone. Have a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close?
All favor. Have a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I don't think they could hear you, Ms. Porches.
Kadruva's.
Eric, there's three votes for yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, next up are payment of claims. This is resolution twenty-one dash one six, one six three, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through August eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, the total bill is six million, four thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Have a motion to approve that, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
And next resolution twenty twenty-one, one sixty-four, appoint CBVG representative for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Resolution one sixty-five, resolution authorizing the issuance of bid specifications and advertisement for bids pursuant to the local public contracts law in JSA forty-eight eleven dash one, sector for renovations to the police department locker room and lobby bathrooms. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Resolution one sixty-six, resolution authorizing the purchase of lockers for the police department locker rooms from Maker Office Supplies under New Jersey State Contact Number nineteen dash GN SBI dash zero zero six four three. Have a motion, please. Have a second.
Council President Wu? Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Resolution one sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of bid specifications and advertisement for bids pursuant to the local public contracts law in JSA forty-eight eleven dash one, and set, uh, for leave for rental services.
So move.
Second.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Resolution one sixty-eight, advertiser position of crossing guard. Have a motion. Roll call.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park? Councilman Park? Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Resolution one sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the hiring of Mark with sang out to the part-time position of basketball program coordinator for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two season. Have a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Wu? Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Uh, resolution one seventy, appoint borough attorney, uh, Anne Marie Resudo in her law firm. Have a motion.
So move.
Second. Mr. Do I hear a second, Mayor? Can you hear one?
Uh, why don't you adjourn next month? I want to know that. Okay, I don't want to vote.
Sorry, William.
I, I, I'd like to table that one.
We, we need a
Tomorrow. Mr. Bernstein is finished tomorrow?
Yeah.
He's finished tonight.
Okay, put it up for vote.
That's the second. All right, we have a second. Kind of roll call, please.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Epstein.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's. You have two yeses, man.
Against one abstention, motion passes.
Okay.
Resolution one seventy-one, award summit stupid, new Prince Concrete Company.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Um, one, resolution one seventy-two, resolution of the Borough of Angler Close, authorizing the execution of our First Amendment to the Developers Agreement with the Michaels Development Company, LLP, as to the House and Terrace redevelopment project.
So move.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Council President Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Diego Goryo? Councilman Luciano? Councilman Kadruva's.
Thank you. So all those resolutions passed. Uh, committee council member reports, uh, does, does anyone have any committee reports? Um, Mr. Park? Mr. Pharaoh, do you have anything? Okay, Mr. Wu?
No, nothing for myself.
Old business, new business. Um, a, a plant recreation chair. But the reason why we're appointing recreation chair in August is because Mr. Kadruvus resigned that position. I asked him why. He didn't explain. I just said, you don't want to do it anymore. But that's my understanding anyway. So, Mr. Wu, is there any
I think we should leave these for the next meeting, Mayor, everyone. For me personally, I'm, my bandwidth is
Okay. I, I think it's like, Mr. Bernstein, is that my appointment?
As a liaison, I believe it is, Your Honor, but I'll leave that to
The Recreation Department.
No, I don't know. I don't have it in front of me, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Park, would you want to be the recreation?
No.
Chair. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Park.
No.
No, you don't want to be recreation chair, okay? All right, we'll revisit that. Mr. Pharaoh, did you?
Well, I think I have a couple of appointments that could be very busy.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll revisit that next month. I appoint Board of Education liaison. I had asked the council members that Mr. Kadruvus resigned from that liaison position as well. Again, I'm not sure why he did that. He didn't explain. I asked him. I also asked him for a status report of where things were left off, but I never got that either. So no one got back to me wanting to do it. So I'm gonna carry this to the next meeting. And I, I think this is probably a good time for me to just say to the public, listen, when, when people come and ask you to vote for them, please make sure that they're going to actually do their jobs, do their work, show up at committees, give committee reports. It takes a lot of time. But, but you know, it's, it's more than just, you know, the high school thing where you have, where you want to get your friends to like you and vote for you. This is actually work. So please ask all candidates for both parties. You know, are you gonna actually work, right? We actually just saw three people walk out of this meeting because they didn't want to do any work tonight. And that's not fair to all of you. And, you know, I could take all the criticisms, you know, it's fine because most, most people, I, I don't talk to them all the time about how much time I am putting into this and trying to fix some problems from the past. It takes a lot of time. And you know, if, if you're gonna hear one side of the story, you should hear both. So when you hear things or when you read things from Karen Geiger, whose ink may have run dry tonight, because I know she's not gonna write about her, her, you know, the three people that she's charmed in her next newsletter, I'll tell you about it. It, it takes a lot of time. So just vote for people who are actually good to work. I always said, I'll work with anyone who'll work with me. And I still hold true to that. So I don't care what party you're from. Have a motion to adjourn.
So
Have a second?
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, oh, I was just gonna say thank you to Mr. Bernstein's office for all their work as being Borough Attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone. Good night.